Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Harrisburg City Council Legislative Session, May 26, 2015. I'm calling this meeting to order at 6 o'clock PM. Mr. Petraskey, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allen.
Present.
Mr. Baltimore.
Here.
Ms. Daniels.
Present.
Mr. Kuplinsky.
Present.
Ms. Reed.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here. Thank you. Moving on to invocation. Mr. Baltimore, please. Thank you, Mr. Baltimore. Ms. Wilson, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Moving on to communications. This evening, we have a report from MSW Consultants, and it's regarding the city sanitation services. Good evening, gentlemen. How are you?
Good evening.
Would you please introduce yourselves?
I'm Robert Hasemeyer with Barton &amp; La Judas Engineers, and my colleague Terry Keen is with MSW Consultants, and together, we form the primary team for the report, some of the report that we're going to introduce this evening.
Okay. Go ahead, gentlemen. Is your mic on? Okay.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah. Well, thanks for having us. We were invited to your session tonight to give an introduction to the study that we've had ongoing for about a year now. It's, we were asked to give about a 10-minute presentation, and there may be a time at a later-time workshop or some other format to go into more detail. So we'll try to keep our presentation of about 10 minutes or so, and then open it up for question and answer period if you have any.
And if you need additional time, we don't have a problem with that. And if you would like us to set up another meeting, we certainly can do it under the Public Works Committee. Our Public Works Chair, Ms. Reed, can set a time and date for that.
Thank you.
Long as it's before December.
So we prepared a little PowerPoint here, and I'll just, I'll go over the first few slides, and then I'll turn it over to Robert to go over some of the details of the report. A little background, 2012, 2013, the city was looking at ways to try to reduce its debt, come up with long-term solutions. You know, the Harrisburg Strong Plan was being developed. Many ideas were being proposed to save money. One of those, which was suggested and attempted in 2013, was to privatize solid waste and recycling collection in the city. Bids went out in, I think, the middle of 2013. There were four bidders that responded to that, five that were interested, four that responded. There was an evaluation done and presentations made, I think, before City Council on that information. No action was ever taken on that bid, and that's certainly the city's right whether to, you know, act on that and receive, accept bids or not. But there were a lot of concerns at that time, including concerns from City Council. So we move to 2014. We have new mayor in place. Harrisburg Strong Plan still is looking at trying to make improvements to the current sanitation system. In around May or June of last year, Barton &amp; La Judas was hired based on experience. I won't say we're old, but Robert and I each have over 30 years of experience in the industry. We have a, I'd like to think we have a good reputation. It was recommended that we, you know, come in, provide an independent evaluation and guidance to the city. On the next slide there, why did we do this report? Well, the state, DCED, Department of Community Environmental, excuse me, Economic Development, DCED, the receiver, and the receiver team still wanted to look at some improvements to the system. So when we were initially contracted, we were asked to look at trying to improve and privatize this, but also, DCED was open to options. And we pursued that. We met with a lot of what I'll call stakeholder groups during that period of time. Our initial findings was that, number one, there was not a lot of support for bidding, privatizing. And the corollary to that, there was strong support from all the different groups we met with, which includes City Council, Mayor's Office, sanitation staff, the union, provide staff, to keep it as a public service and try to improve it. On the other hand, we recognized and we saw there are a lot of issues that need to be improved. So we say it's a flawed system that is fixable, and we felt strongly, the more we looked at this, that there are a lot of good things about the program and ways that it could be improved and, and made more sustainable. The city does provide a lot of good services and a wide range of services, and one of the concerns was if this was privatized, there are still a lot of services that would probably not come under that bidding, would still be responsibility of the city, possibly with the loss of the revenue stream that would go to a private company. So we were directed, after we reviewed that, gave our initial recommendations, to authorize to move down that route at looking at trying to improve the existing public system. DCED is supportive of this. They do want to see that we can demonstrate, the city can demonstrate, we can make changes and measure success. So that's the approach we're taking. We want to take small, make small improvements, and we have several tiers of recommendations. As we make those improvements, we want to review those, make sure they're in place, make sure they're doing what they should be before we move on. There are some constraints which are a real challenge that a lot of municipalities don't have to deal with. There's a put-or-pay contract, which is a delivery contract of 35,000 tons a year that has to go to the Susquehanna Resource Management Center, SRMC, the former Harrisburg incinerator. So as we, if we can improve recycling and cut back on waste, if we drop below 35,000 tons a year, there is an obligation to pay, still pay for 35,000 tons a year. And that's at $190 a ton, and that was part of the deal that brought Lancaster Solid Waste Management Authority in to run the facility for the next 20 years. And there is an escrow account obligation in there. There's also what we call the legacy budget amount, which is collected by sanitation, but it actually supports related things that are not directly under sanitation, such as street sweeping and leaf pickup, some of these other services. So there are obligations that have to be maintained as we improve the system, and we've looked at it with that in mind. So as I said, the city, the system is flawed, but it is fixable, can be made sustainable. And the bottom of this slide in quotes is, is kind of the saying that we reviewed over and over with the city and with staff, "If this were a business and I owned it, how would I run it? What changes would I make?" So we're asking all stakeholders to be open to making changes to make this more workable. The report documents a number of details. Existing conditions are challenging. City collection is out of sight, out of mind, and we saw plenty of what we called mini-dumps, you know, stuff put out at the city that it was beyond what was required as far as the number of items, the types of materials put out. It's a question about where some of that comes from, and dumps that show up, you know, a day after they're cleaned up. The city does a very good job of trying to clean those up, but because it's city, I'm sorry, because it's alley placement, it's hard, it's kind of hidden, hidden out of sight. And we saw a lot of examples of that. Trucks have a low in-service rate. There were times where we had more, we saw more crews than trucks, and it's a daily challenge. So there's improvements that have to be made to the equipment. There's low recycling participation, and in this day and age, the city does not collect fiber, which is the paper and the magazines and the books. With that, that's a lot of the waste stream. That's 40, 45% of the waste stream. So there's a lot of opportunity to recycle more and increase participation. So there is support for making these improvements, for using public staff, for the union being open to making changes to become more efficient, to become more sustainable, keep the strengths, fix the flaws. And with, and there, with that, Robert will go over some of the details that we identified in the report just very briefly.
First and foremost, we need a reliable collection fleet. Nine waste trucks are needed daily. The four newest trucks turned out to be the most unreliable because of some air emission control equipment on that. The city Department of Public Works is still working their way through some of these issues. Some of things are already happening. Cart tippers are required for some efficiency of collection. My understanding is that the trucks have now been retrofitted with cart tippers. Some of the recycling trucks don't have compaction. There's a new truck on order, plus we've adapted one of the backup vehicles for recycling. The next three items deal with just how Public Works relates to vehicle maintenance, and they're increasing their inventory of parts, trying to get some in-house maintenance to concur simultaneously rather than in the tiered repair mode in which police and fire have priority over the, over the garbage trucks. And there's some sequencing that's working behind the scenes. It's, it's better now, but I believe that the city will probably still have to refine some of those procedures over the next coming months. GPS locator and some route management software. As the city begins to upgrade its collection routes and service, some of the benefits, the economic benefits that we report on are only achievable if we get some route location software, route management software in place. And it's pretty feasible these days, pretty economical, but we report that probably one to two crews can probably be revised as the city begins to have more recycling and get dependable trucks on the road. That leads me to equipment upgrade and replacement. The city's already procured two backup trucks. I have another one lined up, which will become available in another month or so from another borough. Municipal and municipal procurement is pretty easy, and the prices have been very reasonable. It's within the budget that has already been established for 2015. I've already mentioned about a compactor-style recycled trucks. Your recycling coordinator's already put one of them into service, one of the backup trucks that we have into service, and another one will be on order. And as the commercial waste accounts become part of the city collection again, that a couple of front-end loader trucks are going to be required to service some of those dumpsters, particularly because of the safety issues that were identified with those rear-loading dumpsters. Commercial waste collection, the dumpsters are worn out. They are literally worn out. They're a very dangerous condition. The city staff does a marvelous job working with those, but Terry and I are acknowledging that we need to change the way that the city is doing business and maybe get into a front-end loading situation. Part of being worn out is that the city also collects a lot of water as part of that commercial waste collection, and we dispose of it at $190 a ton. So part of having new dumpsters is to collect dry waste and not the water that goes with it. The commercial waivers, I've been reading in the press, and you probably have too, that some of the recent outreach to the commercial accounts, there's billing errors and, and waste that's not coming into the city coffers, not being acknowledged on the city books. And in the long run, that is going to cost the city because we need that 35,000 tons a year as a put-or-pay. You're going to have to pay for it, so if that lost waste isn't coming back to the city, it'll start to add up in a lost fee. Few other things, residential set-out practices. The report documents many issues that are both safety and cleanliness and just efficiency operated, working in the alleys. We're recommending as part of that that some kind of standardized container, as well as being brought to curbside, which is where the recycling is, is already performed, be part of this, well, it's part of the recommendation. There's recycling improvements, and with a waste diversion revenue of $190 a ton, depending upon the efficiencies of, of city participation, that means somewhere between a half a million to over a million dollars' worth of savings to the city. Savings occurring by waste not being paid for at the incinerator. It's easy to implement now. As part of our study, certain things were already acted on in the city, and if you hold that thought, the next slide will, will focus on some things that are already in motion. Revenue collection. The report identified several areas where billing errors occur, revenues are being lost, and most importantly, that if it's set out and the city crews can identify it as not being a mini-dump, they collect it, just as part of the efficiency of service. They do not want callbacks. It's part of that esteemed service that is being provided to the citizen of the city, but we're not collecting any revenue from it. When I say "we," collectively, everybody in this room that is participating and going to make some results happen here. Education, some of that has already started to occur. We recommend improvement to some of those education programs and having an ongoing education system. I wrap up with some good news. During the course of almost a year that Terry and I have been involved here, we have found a whole lot of recognition on the part of staff and everybody involved with sanitation that things are not well, but there are need for improvement, and we're being the vehicle for that. We're being a mouthpiece for some of that. Some of those improvements are easy. Some have already been instituted. Paying to haul recycling away and deposit the recycling materials, that has already changed. We pointed out some of those opportunities, and the city did not take long to make those changes. The city offers many more services than what can be offered through privatization. At issue here is how do we move forward, and like I said, some of the easy fruit is already being worked. There's a more difficult challenge ahead of us. Some of the billing errors, we're working through some of that. Revenue collection, I understand from the mayor in a meeting this afternoon that I've participated in, that some of the really gross billing error accounts are well in progress in getting some kind of resolution. The city's hired a recycling coordinator. We have an enforcement person now. Two backup vehicles have already been procured to lessen some of that burden on the existing fleet. I, like I said, I have another one identified, which will become available in about another month or so. And lastly, but the city is very capable of implementing most of the improvements that we have recommended, but we're going to do this all as a team. I mean, it's not the report of Terry and I. We're going to be a facilitator. We're going to help with some of the implementation, courtesy of DCED, who is represented here tonight behind me. But we also need to have the citizens educated about why we're making some of these changes and to participate in these changes, because without their assistance, then we're going to fall backwards probably on some of the things that we've documented in our report. On your desk tonight, I have provided some, an executive summary that, there's a 150-page report. We did not expect to include it all tonight. There are a few things in the future that we'd like to, to address, and that is drop-off locations. There is still a significant need for some alternatives for the citizens, and the question in front of all of us is how do we provide some of those alternatives? The easy one to say is that construction demolition debris can be delivered to the incinerator, but there are still many other materials that find their way to what's termed mini-dumps, and eventually, the city crews go out and they clean these up, and they keep reappearing. So part of it is education, part of it is enforcement, but we really believe that an alternative is eventually needed. Lastly, I'd like to suggest to you what I've suggested to the mayor. There's approximately $2 million, a little over $2 million in legacy cost that shows up in the sanitation budget each year, but when I look at it in terms of what kind of services are being performed to maintain a clean city, something that is above and beyond just collecting refuse or recycling on a weekly basis, it's part of street cleaning, it's leaf collection, it's, it's a host of other services related to, to what I call sanitation. And when I did the budget analysis, it's almost equal to that budgetary transfer, and I'd like to suggest to council that we consider that opportunity to erase the legacy fee and put it all together into one budget that's required to maintain a clean city. And with that, Madam President, I'd like to turn the floor back over to you.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to start with Mr. Baltimore. Is there any questions that you have?
Maybe one. Just wanted to know about the water, rain, rainwater.
Yes, sir.
You mean water in the dumps that were?
Yeah, the, if you have, a lot of the dumpsters that are out there now have lids that are broken, so you can't seal it. So when Robert said, "Collect dry waste," I mean, you're collecting the waste where the moisture it is, but if you have a storm, that water also gets in there. I think we have had an example that we witnessed, we estimated probably the water in the dumpster was, had a cost of about $80 to the city to dump that, because there's 240 gallons and a ton of water. So if you have that water, you're still paying for that across the scale, so just by putting lids on good dumpsters, you're going to cut down on that part of the weight. That's what that was related to.
You said the billing not on the books?
There are accounts that are being, let me see if I can report this. We have a, the city maintains accounts primarily on the commercial side, but there's a few on the residential side also, where those accounts are not properly being recorded. They are, on the commercial side, they might be registered as loose waste, and they have a dumpster. The dumpster may be undersized on the books. There are some recent examples, like the Harrisburg school system, which are not being, they're not paying their share, and those are the kinds of things that are not being correct, or I, they're not correct in the city's account books. And Public Works has been slowly going through and rectifying those errors as part of the standardized container program that we've recommended. The city is currently moving forward with standardized containers on the commercial side.
Okay. Ms. Daniels?
No.
You don't have any? Okay, Mr. Kuplinsky.
Thank you, Madam President. One of the things that, when we were going through the Lakswama deal, that we went back and forth on was the 35,000 tons of put-or-pay. And, and, you know, we're not experts on, on trash and how much is generated, and you guys are. And so is that a, a fair goal for the city to have put on itself 35,000 tons per, per year, especially when we're trying to grow a recycling program, which will of course cut down on that tonnage?
Yeah, I think there's, there's a few factors that interrelate here. The first is, as you said, as recycling increases, those tons are going to go down. I think we estimated, I think the 2013 or 2014 tons possibly were about 38,600, so a few thousand tons over that. But with an aggressive recycling program, you could drop below that, potentially, and still have to pay that. But as Robert said, there are a large number of commercial accounts that historically were not collected by the city, and there's a strong feeling that some of those were not being documented as city waste, because a private hauler that comes in pays $190 if it's city waste, $80 a ton if it's other Dauphin County waste. So the administration is very strongly interested in trying to bring, eventually bring all those commercial accounts back, back into the fold. So we're trying to capture, we could call it waste that's leaking out of the system, to capture that. And I guess the, the last comment I'll make is, I'm sure Lakswama, you know, there are two sides to that deal. One side is how much they offered in capital cost to purchase the facility, but they wanted guaranteed income to offset that. Probably, you know, my suspicion would be if the 35,000 was a lower number, maybe their capital offer would have been lower, too, because they are looking at making themselves whole for the next 20 years. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. You presently said that we need nine waste trucks daily. How many do we have presently? Do you know?
Nine.
I believe that you have about 12 in inventory, and they are not all serviceable.
Okay, how many are service, you don't know how many. You're saying we need nine serviceable?
You need nine every day, and I believe that there's three recycling vehicles, and you need about four or five with the more rigorous recycling program.
Okay. And you mentioned that the police and fire have priority over their vehicles being repaired over the trash trucks.
That is the understanding that I have after researching the Public Works practices, is that fire and police get first priority on repairs.
So our repairs go on, weren't, they just sit there?
Sometimes.
Okay. So what do we do as far as repairing our trucks if we only have, you said we need nine, and we have only about six or seven operable?
The, the days that we witnessed some of the operations is that if there were seven trucks, let's say, is that two crews would be notified to come in late, and then they'd use, they'd work a later shift on trucks that work.
Okay. So you're suggesting that we should probably purchase additional three or four additional waste trucks?
In the long run, what I'd like to see is a replacement program, budgeted for, and Mr. Rarick has been investigating some options for lease-to-purchase. The other thing that we're going through right now and trying to identify with some of the changes that, that are going to be occurring, is especially with a more robust recycling program, is that I, I don't see nine routes, nine trucks being deployed for waste collection on a daily basis. And there's still a significant discussion that needs to occur in the next few weeks and months on that issue.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Reed, do you have any questions?
Oh, I think I have a couple. Thank you for your study. I think I've met with twenty of you gentlemen over the year, and I agree with most of the stuff in your report. You're absolutely right. The legacy fund shouldn't be, should be used for a clean and beautiful Harrisburg. I'm glad to see that recycling's up by 13% from when I came in, and that we are going with a standardized cart system, because it is important to have a trash can in every home, because we all know that when there's not a trash can, it becomes a complete and utter mess. One of the things that, you have waste collection vehicles, which is what Ms. Wilson was talking, Ms. Williams was talking about, is that we just did a grant study, if I'm not correctly from wrong, for, we just did a grant to acquire over a five-year period, six vehicles, if I'm correct. They're gas.
Is it not?
It's not.
Is it records as well?
We did apply for a grant for six, six full-fusitive vehicles.
You applied for a grant for $50,000 to $50,000, $60,000. With the context of that grant, there was a schedule for...
They're gas.
Is it not? Is that?
Is it records as well?
We did apply for a grant for six full fuselage vehicles.
We applied for $50,000 to $50,000, $60,000. With the context of that grant, there was a schedule for potential replacement vehicles in the fleet, but we not, that grant is only about a $60,000 grant. They're not, they're not contain the ability to take for those vehicles, that's something that the city has to find the money to do that. That was particularly for natural gas, so we still have to decide as a city whether that's going to be the area. Obviously, they have special needs, the trucks are different in terms of servicing maintenance. So that's another discussion, what the fleet's going to be made out of, how we make sure we get the whole cost of capture, you know, we change the fuel fleet component.
Thank you. Kirk, can you make sure I get a copy of that bill again so I can look over it again? Because that wasn't my understanding, but that's not up for debate right now. You have in here several times as far as the bulky waste, and I'm going to go back and forth on this a couple of times. We're on page nine, but it's filtered throughout this document, on page 11. Provide for better enforcement, Phase Two, recommendations are to reduce reliance on curbside collection of multiple bulky waste items and consider the option for drop-off of bulky waste items by residential customers at a central location. What that says to me is, we provide you an opportunity to put out, what is it, how many months, how many weeks in a year, 52 weeks in a year? So you have 52 items that you can put out a year. And if you can't put out one item per week, what are the odds that you're going to pack your stuff up, load it in your vehicle, and actually take it someplace and properly dump it? The thing is, is that what's going to happen when you provide an option for bulky waste drop-off, you're providing an opportunity for people that want to illegal dump. I've said this multiple times, is that we, for our residents in the curbside pickup, they're offered 52 items a year, one item per week that they can put out. I don't know anybody's house that has more than 52 items per year that they need to put out. But I don't have a problem if you find a place that's not in one of our areas where people automatically illegally dump. Now, if you would like, if you like the alternate drop-off place to be right out front, I don't have a problem with that. But if you take it to one of our neighborhoods where we're already having problems with people illegally dumping, that's not going to work. Because the thing is, if somebody has a bulk item, if I have a couch that I need to put out, the likelihood that I'm taking my couch, my bed, and everything else that I have to an alternative site and dump it, I'm not going to do it. That's why you have a lot of people that dump in the alleys. We need to encourage people to do what they're supposed to do, which is put out one bulk item per week to reduce their amount of clutter in their home. So I really would like to make sure that in going forward that we look into that and understand that when you open up one door as a possible solution, it creates a giant opportunity for those that don't want to be in compliance in the first place.
Yeah, and I'll just, I'll just respond that I understand what you're saying. And we've seen other cases where if you give people an option, a legal option on how to handle their waste, they're more apt to do that than they are to, say, if they have two or three items. I mean, we, Robert and I were on the, with the collection crews on multiple days. There were some piles that had probably half a dozen bulky items out. You know, there's an enforcement part of that, there's an education part of that. But I think if we provide another option, and if somebody, if there would be a central drop-off location where it's manned, where somebody can check to make sure it's a city resident, items could be brought there. I agree that if they're not going to, you know, if they're not going to comply with one a week, are they going to drive it to another location? But possibly through enforcement and fines and other measures, you know, they may be encouraged to do that, and it may be worth doing that.
I understand your logic, but I would much prefer for us to start with working and enforcing the laws that we currently have on the books and ensuring that people understand what the laws are now before we provide them other options. Because our ordinances are not optional, they're mandated by law. And we need to make sure that people are doing what they're supposed to be doing before we give them options. It's like the classic case of when you tell your child over and over and over again not to do something, and they keep doing it, then no, are you really effective? No, you're not, you know, if they're keep doing it. So that's not, I'm not arguing with you, I just want to make sure that before we start exploring options, we start enforcing our own ordinances. And here we have, we did announce that we're no longer collecting glass. We need an ordinance change, if that is going to be the ordinance. We cannot, we can say it all we want, but until we actually change the ordinance, until we get a bill across council and get it through committee and get it approved, we can't really say that we're no longer collecting glass. We have to be very careful about, you know, when we tell people that we can't do something.
Actually, there will be a bill, but actually you can. Because just like the bill also said, all of these years, that we were collecting cardboard and we were collecting all these other types of recycling, the reality is, the city didn't have the capacity to do what it was, the ordinance had said to be done. So it was an administrative portion of it. It's a punitive bill. That is, you know, the question is, when you say you won't collect glass, the, what the bill did was penalize you for not putting it out. So the city will not be enforcing a penalty on people, but they also will not reject it if it's there. So, but, so the whole thing has to be rewritten from a lens of what the reality is in the 21st century now with recycling. And it probably should be a very carefully constructed bill with the recycling coordinator and everyone else sort of looking with the council, you know, what do we want to do looking forward?
And the reason why I brought that up is because anytime you tell someone that they can't do something, it's amazing. That's the one thing that they remember. You could tell when they could put out a bulk item every week and they, you'd be surprised, that's been on the books for two years now, since we, since I actually, and that came through my committee two years ago. And people are still, oh, we can put out one bulk item a week. You have any idea how many people came to me and said, "What, we can't, we can't put out glass anymore?" The moment you tell somebody they can't do something, it's amazing, they remember it. So that's why I'm saying that we may need to look at our legislation. And that's no fault of anyone's here, I just want to make sure that we're going on the books and make sure that when we're putting stuff out, that we're doing what we're not supposed to do. Again, there's the drop-offs, I'm not recommending that. And there's, again, on page 13, recommending a separate space for drop-off. And we do, yard waste is another one, and I am so happy to hear that we're finally taking, a lot of these, a lot of these things are things that, you must have been inside my head that I've been saying over and over again, hadn't have made it to paper at least. Because there is a, there is a request, especially this time of year when people are cleaning out their yards and they're getting their, you know, backyard set up, they're cutting down, they're brushing their trees and, you know, all of the stuff that's been thrown and laid out since the fall, what do you do with it? In the city of Harrisburg, there's no proper place to take your recycling. And unfortunately, when we do this leaf collection, because we have so much litter on the street because people don't have trash cans, it's co-mingle with trash and it's not effectively recyclable, even if we took it to Susquehanna, nine times out of 10, they're going to turn them away, and then guess what? We're paying $190 per ton for something that we could actually pay for, get disposed of for free. So we do need to have some plans on that, and we need to focus, I think, if you wanted to put more focus on getting yard waste and those types of things, and getting people to clean up in front of their homes, that would be a more beneficial focus as of right now than giving them another alternative than the 52 opportunities that we've given them already for bulk waste disposal. I do agree with the phase, the photo enforcement with today's technology, we can, we can, you know, most of the sanitation workers or especially all of the supervisors have city-paid phones, which are smartphones, and they can take pictures and upload them directly to their email and create a file. So I believe that that use of technology will be beneficial. I don't know how, it doesn't seem like it's very complicated in 2015 world to be able to upload a photo and send it as an email to the codes enforcement officer and get the correct type of enforcement. But I'm glad to see the forward thinking on that. But I appreciate your study and I appreciate all of your time. I know you guys have been in the alleys. And when I say you've been in the alleys, I know that you have because you can cite some things that are like, wow. And that's usually in your first time out, that's what you come back with, wow. And I appreciate you taking the time and effort to do so. Thank you. That's all I have, Madam President.
You're welcome, Ms. Reed. Ms. Ollie.
No questions.
Oh, wait, one more thing. The 150-page report, may I have a copy of it, the entire report?
Yes.
Thank you.
We will get to that.
Is that it, Ms. Reed?
That's it. I'm sorry.
I'll share it with Mr. Petrowski, and he can share it with all the council.
Okay, thank you.
No questions, Ms. Ollie? Ms. Wilson?
I have, I think, two, maybe three questions. Based on the information you talked about with the commercial waste collection accounts, when do we expect to have all of those reconciled? There's no, what I find on this report, which I think is important, is what are the target dates to have this stuff completed by in terms of having them back on the city's books? Do we have a target date? If not, I'd like for us to evaluate it and tell us when we're going to have them all on. And then my second question would be, and this isn't necessarily directed to you because it's really administration that needs to come up with that date, a target date of when that's going to be complete. And my second question is, how much revenue have we actually lost in respect to the accounts that haven't been paid, that we now be collecting from, once we get all this stuff reconciled? I think it's important for the community to know what has gone on over the last couple of years, the amount of money it hasn't received. And so it's going to change, I think, the dynamics in terms of where that collection when it comes in and what takes place from this point forward.
Well, I'm certainly not going to speak on behalf of the mayor, but in working with his staff, they've already begun the commercial account transition. And from my vantage point, over the next four to six weeks, that a significant portion of the current accounts, that is, the current city accounts, should be transitioned over and affirmed. When I say affirmed, that is justified against what the billings are. If they have a four-yard dumpster, is to make sure that that's what they actually have and that we're replacing it with carts of comparable quality, number, and those kinds of confirmations. There's the so-called exempt accounts, those are the account, commercial accounts that are being handled by private haulers currently. There's 340-some of those accounts. And the mayor has already begun a dialogue with a legal firm that represents the haulers that collect those accounts. And there is at least a willingness to participate. There are some procedural technical issues that need to be worked through in the next, I'm going to say, two to six weeks in order to make that transition a reality as those contracts come up. As for the lost revenues, I'm not tracking that, and I don't have access to that information. I'll have to defer to somebody from city staff that knows those numbers. It's a lot of money.
Well, I want to know what that lot of money is. I think that we need to know how much money has been forgone over the last couple of years because it's evident based on the billing errors, where you're finding things that weren't properly billed. We need to know how much that was annually, and it might take the administration some time to go back through and gather that data. But I think it's important for us to know what were the opportunities that were missed and how much, and it eventually will be a gain once everything gets reconciled, okay? So that reconciliation, I don't know if it's going to be, once after you finish your six weeks, maybe it'll be, we really won't realize anything probably for another six months to really tell you how good or bad the situation is. Well, in my, in my mind, it was bad because we weren't getting the full freight for what people were actually disposing to begin with. So anything going from nothing to something is better than, you know, not having anything at all. And so by that reconciliation process, I think we need to know what that amount is. And just, we need to go back. And I mean, you can take that and just extrapolate that back over the last couple of years because if they haven't been paying and we're now putting them back on the books, how many years have they not been paying their full freight? I mean, because those are missed opportunities that impacted the city's ability to do some things, I think, in Public Works that they could have done otherwise, whether it was buying trucks or dumpsters or fixing their equipment or hiring new personnel or whatever, that impacts that particular area. And that's not for you, but the administration, and if the mayor wants to try to answer that and tell us what's going on, and then either have the director come in at some time to address it, we'd be appreciative.
Okay. I'm sorry, Dave, did you have something to say? I know you were.
Yes, that's.
You want to come to the mic, please?
Okay.
Oh, it doesn't matter, you can sit down.
That's a task that we're undertaking at this point, it's a very difficult task.
Can barely hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. You all right?
Yeah. That's a task that we are undertaking under this point, and it's a very difficult task because the system screwed up tremendously. When the division between Capitol Region Water and the city took place, we found out that there were more accounts that were incorrect than there were correct. There were a huge amount of customers not paying what they were supposed to pay, not paying anything at all. And some were just paying a fee outright, and nothing was ever done. You know, through month after month, when our billing was being done by the people who were doing the billing, it was just, okay, it's the same this month as it is next month, I mean, as it was last month, so it's fine. It was never that you have an eight-yard dumpster, someone needs to go take an onsite visit to make sure that this dumpster is an eight-yard dumpster that we're picking up once a week. We're going out and we're finding out that some people have two dumpsters and they're paying for once a week, and we're finding that we're picking up five times a week and they're paying for once a month, once a week, and it's disastrous. But we are correcting, and it takes time, it's a very tedious effort, we're working very hard, we are working long hours because we found that it's more difficult than we thought it was going to be.
Can I just make a suggestion then, since it's so tedious, and maybe the administration needs to do it? I'm not quite sure how many people are doing what you're suggesting. But I would think if you block the city off or you broke it out into sections, to do it area by area by area, because you know there's some that you're not going to get to, if you see you've got some that are huge, that where you know they're big dollars on the table, those are what you call the low-lying fruit, you go right after them directly. And the small ones, you take them area by area by area, and eventually you get it reconciled. But I would think it's the big, the big dollars that we want to go after right away. And somehow, there's got to be a system that sorts that out. But I think the process that you have, either we need more men, and if you need that, then you need to tell us that so that we can then work with the administration. Because to me, it's money laying on the table that I don't think we can afford to miss. And so I'm just going to make that suggestion and recommendation. And I think this council would be in support of that when we're talking about real green dollars. This is not loose change, we're talking about big dollars here, whether it's hundreds and thousands or whether it's a million. You know, that goes a long way to supporting the issue that's directly dealing with the trucks. Because if we know that that money's there, then that could be the money that actually pays for the trucks without having to go out for a loan or anything else like that. So I'm just going to throw that out there as a suggestion.
All right, thank you, Ms. Wilson. Dave, thank you. Mr. West?
Yeah, I was just going to jump in and say a couple of issues. We should have the audit of all the existing commercial accounts done by the end of the year. It's going to take all year to do it. There are about 2,000 existing commercial accounts, and each of those requires basically, you know, a site visit and a verification and a switch to toters from whatever the system that they were. We think we've gotten most of the larger ones. In terms of what the cost was, you know, probably the school district alone... In terms of what the cost was, you know, probably, the school district alone probably accounted for a loss of at least $10 million in revenue since the start of the, the cone years. Figure almost $1 million a year loss that we've been having to pay to dispose of trash, but not recouping that. Most of the larger accounts, though, are in the hands of private haulers. And that's where it's going to take longer than a year. We've basically adopted the position that we're going to try and move those back into the city over time as their contracts, existing contracts and whatnot expire. Most of the private hauler contracts are all a maximum of three years. So if you figure over the course of the next three years, they'll be slowly expiring and transferring over to the city. And then there's the issue of other accounts where we've performed the service and they just haven't paid. And, and some of those, I think, I think we're talking about potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars in accounts where we might have to go through litigation in order to ever recoup that. But in some instances, we've offered payment plans and settlements and all sorts of things. We're actively working on, on all different fronts. So what we hope to accomplish by the end of this year is for all the accounts that are currently commercial, for which the city picks up and provides service, to have them converted to toters or to the new system, and to have them basically paying the right amount.
Any other questions, council members?
How was this problem discovered? Because your own, Mr. West called it a disastrous situation. And, you know, I think the administration previously said, oh, we're not going to worry about back payments, trying to recoup some of that money. But how, how did this situation originally come up? And to be discovered that we had accounts there that weren't getting paid or severely backlogged?
Well, I can, I can say from a technical basis, you know, we talked about opportunities in the report to capture waste and bring those accounts that had waivers at some point back into the system. And I know when we ask, you know, who are those accounts, there was some question about even who those accounts are. There's bills that were sent out to addresses, but there was some confusion on who those waivered accounts were. You know, there's a feeling that it might be 20 years ago when those waivers were issued, and they were good for three years. So I think it was just a, maybe a lack of focus on what those accounts were until maybe we started asking questions. Maybe that helped try to, you know, identify that there isn't good information on that. And certainly, the, the work that the administration has done and staff on trying to, you know, what, over the past six or eight months now, going out and reaching out to all the commercial accounts. I mean, that's kind of a spin-off of these recommendations.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen.
If I may add to that, Mr. Koplinsky and the other members of council, is that I'm not sure that we uncovered anything in our report or with our examination. What we have done is to facilitate, I think, good management. There's an underlying goodwill. There's an underlying mood among city staff to provide the best level of service to the citizens of this community. And they do that unfailingly, day after day, with sometimes with crippled equipment and other operating difficulties. What we have done is to look at this with eyes from the standpoint of, you know, is this normal? What else can we do to make a better business arrangement here? And that process was created in 1979 by the city of Phoenix, and it's been termed managed competition. We have that opportunity here with a privatized contract that was presented to council in 2013. So we know what the comparison is. Now we're trying to bring some better management conditions to, to bear on this. So how can, so ultimately, how are we going to sustain a better system? And more importantly, I think, to respond to the questions that I'm hearing from multiple members of council, how do we get paid for these extra services that are being provided by the city? And, and with that, we need some better bookkeeping, some better ways of at least keeping the books up to date. So before I leave, Madam President, I'd like to introduce Mr. Reddick. He's probably already known to you.
He is.
But he is paying our fees.
Okay.
And I'd like to at least acknowledge him as our benefactor.
Good evening, Mr. Fred Reddick. How are you? Thank you. Thank you very much. Good to see you, Fred. And Ms. Reed has requested that she have another meeting to, to address some of the questions in the pamphlet that you gave us. She said she didn't have an opportunity to read it all, so she would like for you to come back to Public Works Committee.
If possible.
If possible.
Okay.
Some of the questions that I will have, and I'm looking at 618, and that's not written in stone, but I've looked at our schedule. I don't have any, nobody has anything on the 18th as of yet. But some of the questions that I will be coming back, and I'm hopefully that the administration can be forward with giving us a little bit more insight, especially on the billing errors, the progress of the, the grant that was brought up. And we don't have clarification, or I'm thinking the grant's one thing, and it's another thing, so maybe some clarification on that. The vehicles that we have in service, and what are the terms, that, what are the things that we're going to be doing to get rid of those vehicles that are in service? The timeframe of the prioritization of the use of the Public Works Vehicle Maintenance Facility to ensure that the Public Works Vehicles are recycled, since it is Public Works, that their vehicles are being recycled in to be repaired, not in front of public safety vehicles, but at least giving them a little bit higher priority, so that they're not sitting in undue time. So some of the, those are some of the things. And I will send Public Works and administration a complete list of things that we'll be looking at, since it's about three weeks out, so to give you some time to gather some information and have an open conversation, so that everybody can get some questions answered, asked, I mean, answered. And then we'll also be able to talk about the recycling efforts, the increase in recycling. We went from 5% to 18% last year. We're now over, over 20%. Finding out exactly where we're at with recycling, and seeing where we're at as far as the number with Laxwana, how, where are we at with our tonnage, and are we in jeopardy of being penalized? So I think those are some of the questions that many of our colleagues may have, and I'm encouraging my colleagues to send any questions that you may have on the, the direction of what Public Works and sanitation is going to me, so that we can get these questions out to the administration before the 18th of next month, so that we can have an open dialogue. And that way, if there's some questions that they may have to do some research, that they can do that research before the meeting and get that information out.
Okay. Thank you. Again, thank you, sir. Do you have something?
Yes. Is the 18th a standing committee meeting? Because I see on Mr. King's calendar that he is unavailable all that week, and the week before, on another commitment.
He would be available the next week, though.
Oh, we're out of time. You're not here the next week. Mr. King is not available. Will you, will you be available, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'd rather than move it back to another week, I'd rather split you in half and take one and not both.
The, the other request, just to reiterate what Ms. Reed has, has requested, is that if you can at least funnel the questions through to Kirk, so that I can at least do some research and cooperate with the colleagues at Public Works that I've already become accustomed to.
That would be great. Thank you. All right. Thank you. So then, that's tentative for the 618?
Yes.
Okay.
Because he's available, and hopefully the administration will be able to, will be able to work with the administration, get any questions that we have, so that we don't keep, that sometimes you have to have a meeting to get all of the questions answered that are running around in your head. Mr. Mayor, you had a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to address the timing issue and say that a lot of these issues were, you know, in plain sight, readily available. Many of the disputed trash cans went all the way back to 2008. And what, what happened is that this is the first year where city council, through the budgeting process, determined to try and address the problems by improving the fleet, providing enough money to buy additional vehicles, to make upgrades, to hire additional sanitation staff. That gave us the capacity, for the first time really, to address them. So we, we saw them last year, and we determined, as a part of the budgeting process with you, that we were going to finally do something about them. But a lot of these are longstanding issues, and I think council deserves the credit for prioritizing it in this year's budget.
Oh, no. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This is not accusatory. This is not a fact, a witch hunt mission. It's just a fact-finding mission and information gathering, so that everybody can be on board and be caught up to speed as to where we're at. And we do appreciate the administration for, A, finding that there were some stopgaps in the budget amount, and the split from Capital Region Water probably helped facilitate that by us taking over our own billing and seeing exactly what was going on. And now that we know, you know, sometimes knowing what the problems are is part of the solution, but trying to figure out where we're going to go forward, and getting the public the rest of the answers, because everybody's curious, you know? When you say $10 million over 10 years, that's a lot of money. And, you know, that's only one entity. So, you know, I think the public would like to have a better idea, not to blame, not to blame the current administration for anything that may have went wrong. It's because at the end of the day, you know, it's all about what you inherit and what you do about it that makes accountability, and that's all we're trying to do.
Okay. Thank you. Again, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you coming in this afternoon, this evening, and look forward to seeing you on the 18th.
Are we dismissed, Madam President?
Yes, you are.
Thank you.
Moving on with the agenda. Courtesy of the floor, I'll start to my left. Anyone who would like to come to the mic, please do so now.
Good evening, council. Hope you all had a wonderful weekend. First thing I want to send out is my, my prayers for the woman who was hit by the falling tree branch during the Arts Festival yesterday. A branch, I think, at Riverfront State Street. A freak accident. It's not a dead tree. The tree's fine, but it happens. I do know we now have an arborist, and the arborist is now out trying to address 20 years of negligence in how we manage and maintain our trees. First, I want to make some comments about this presentation from MSW Report. The Environmental Advisory Council was not consulted. We were not considered a stakeholder. There's been no communication from this firm or the administration about this, these proposals. Not to belabor the point, but if you recall the budget hearings, I made a series of comments about why are we spending certain monies for certain things? I, I think they back up my point about the so-called $2 million in legacy costs. I want to correct the record. The city does not pay for street sweeping. Capital Region Water now pays or reimburses the city for the cost of the street sweeping, so they shouldn't consider that.
Not all of it.
Not all of it.
Not all of it? Well, some, some large amount of it. I think at the last city council meeting, I called for a forensic investigation of the billing. I think it's pretty obvious. There's a need for an audit, or auditors, to be hired to assist the city in this process of who's paying how much for the commercial and institutional waste. Councilwoman Reed is absolutely correct about glass. Section 309.5(c) of the city code says the designated recyclables for residential curbside established pursuant to this chapter, and this is from 2001, plastic jugs, yard waste, newsprint, bi-metal cans, tin cans, aluminum cans, clear, brown, and green glass. It doesn't say anything about cardboard. Doesn't say anything about capacity. It mandates that the residents of the city are required to recycle glass. So if you want to comply with the law, keep recycling glass. If the city wants to take glass out of the list of recyclables, then they need to amend the ordinance. Very simple, it's a very simple thing to be done. My position has been all along for commercial businesses that do not have dumpsters, that only have their office waste picked up once a week, they should pay the same rate as residential customers. There's no difference between an office on State Street that's picked up once a week with a garbage can or two garbage cans and a residence. There's an allegation that we've lost, commercial waste is being lost to the put-or-pay. I will tell you, as of the end of April, we are slightly behind the 35,000 tons of waste. But I will also tell you, on a monthly basis, we receive a report from the facility, and I forward it to the city clerk. And I would hope the city clerk makes it available to council. You can see on a monthly basis how we're doing. When the rates changed in 2009, up to the $200 per ton, there was a significant diversion that occurred from haulers who started to claim they were coming from other municipalities within Dauphin County than from the city of Harrisburg. And I was on the board of the Harrisburg Authority, who at the time was the owner of the incinerator, and we did an investigation, and we raised the issue, and we caught people, and we called them out, the local private haulers who were violating flow control. And some of them paid extra money to stop the practice. And in fact, they told us the practice stopped. Now, there's some issues where, you know, truck starts in Camp Hill, comes over to Harrisburg, picks up some things in Harrisburg, goes to the incinerator. We've been told that Lancaster shouldn't be accepting mixed waste loads. So if they have information that a waste hauler is violating flow control and taking commercial waste someplace other than the incinerator, they need to enforce the law. It's that simple. The county has an enforcement agent. Laxwana, obviously, would be interested in that waste. So there's these allegations that the whole reason we're getting rid of private haulers is because we're losing that waste. I'd like to hear some examples of that recently. My understanding, for the past two years, people seem to be in compliance, but if they have information that somebody isn't, we should know about it. Let's talk about trees. I'll try to be brief. It's in the news today. We're doing a, PennDOT is doing a project along Front Street. The city has asked them to add the bike lane. You all know about that. Unbeknownst to the public, apparently, there are some things happening to some of the trees along Front Street. It is unclear, after talking to many different people, including the arborist for the city and PennDOT, exactly what is going on. This is what I have learned. They are adding two pedestrian crossings to make it safer for residents to go from the residential side of Front Street over to the Riverfront. However, where they've decided to place those crossings, there are two historic, large trees that create a safety hazard and visual hazard for the pedestrians. So my, my comment is, why were those locations chosen to locate those pedestrian crossings? Why wasn't there public notice and a hearing and input over this plan? Who decided the location of the pedestrian crossings? Why wasn't the experts on the Environmental Advisory Council consult? We've heard nothing about any of this, until last Thursday night, when the arborist said, hey, they're cutting down some trees. Were alternative locations considered? What was the age and condition of the trees that were removed? In fact, how many trees were removed? We're now getting different stories. The arborist told me today, it's 16.
Thank you.
Now, I don't know if that means planned or already has occurred, because now I'm hearing they can see only three that were actually removed. The whole point is, why are we operating in secret? Be transparent. Whose plan is it?
Supposed to be.
And why isn't there public notice and opportunity? Those trees, if you walked the festival yesterday on a sunny, humid day, noticed a difference where there was tree shade versus no tree shade. That cools off the city, reduces the amount of stormwater, which we have a significant issue with. So why are we removing trees on Front Street, one of, one of our great natural resources? If some of them are dead, fine, tell us that. But that's not my understanding. My understanding is, they're a nuisance, and they need to, to remove them in order to fix the curb, et cetera. And maybe they're making all the right decisions, but by doing it without public notice and opportunity to participate in the process, creates cynicism and, and makes people just crazy. That's enough. Thank you, folks.
You're welcome. Anyone else to my left? Anyone in the middle?
Good evening. My name is Robert Kennedy, phone number 877-9943. Well, I'm a coalition builder. What that means is, military trainers, how to build communities. Started 30-some years, 40-some years ago, oh my goodness, in Vietnam. Then was trained also in, to do some building in Istanbul and yes, across Turkey. Then I came up here in the time gap when the Mario boat lived. Cubans came up. So what I'm saying, we, that's all we do. We, you know, we just... Cubans came up. So what I'm saying, we, that's all we do. We, you know, we destroy countries. But when you become a leader, in a leader position, you go to school like General Lynch, that you guys know. The military trainers how to build up communities. The other one is, uh, the other initiative that went out to the south side in Harrisburg when all the, oh, back in the eighties under Steven Reed administration, when all the playgrounds were closed, glass everywhere. Well, I'm saying that to say this, um, in working with the community, one of your significant components is the citizen themselves. And as we all know, the alleys and the, you know, the problem we have in there. I always give the analogy that, uh, you know, if a baby is playing outside in mud, you bring that baby inside, clean him up, and put him back in New York, what are you going to do? He's going to get muddy again. So I think a significant part of this is education. Educating. And I know the city council really have been trying over the years, but I want to say this, you did not get the support under the Thompson administration that you get now. I know you've been trying. I know all of you. But what I'm saying is education in that if you put that baby back out in New York, in the mud, he's going to get dirty again. So I think if we push the education part of it and make sure we do some tangible things, I think then whatever significant strategy you put in plan will work. But no matter how much study you do, no matter how, no matter how many million dollars you spend, until we change attitudes, then we're going to end up with the same thing. On my other, I'm also a lead and seed trainer, and that's what we teach, environmental change. The other trainer was your police officer that started P.A.R. And until you change environment, attitude, nothing's going to change.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the middle?
Good evening. My name is Mr. Boyd. Once again, after a long journey through the city of, of Harrisburg, I've watched four mayors in this great city weave a web of deception. We may go again this evening. I may be escorted out of this chamber again, but I will come back again and say my constitutional rights have been violated again and again. I look at this council, sometime I wonder why you are here. You are elected by the people of our great city to do their work, not yours. You have no agenda here. The only agenda that you have are the residents of our great city, the ones that sleep in gutters, the ones that you will not even talk to. I've walked by some of you on Second, Third, and also Fourth Street. You wouldn't pay me attention. You'll look the other way. But all I'm going to say once again, it will always be this. I am so glad that this gentleman came to this microphone and said about the trees. Listen to these trees on North 14th, North 14th Street, around the 20, around 218 to 223. We talk about crime. This is not by the Susquehanna River. But they beat up people right here on this street, Horner Street. You can't even move on the Horner Street. 5:30, 6 o'clock, Honorable Mayor and Council, if you do care. They jump at people at those hours of the night. I'm talking about crime. We also talk about filth sanitation. I really had a big laugh about nine trucks. Have you ever heard this expression? You can do a lot more with less. And if you get into the community and stop doing this with us, talking at us, talk to us, you would have such great, great respect. People will come up to you and they will appreciate. This council has, is lacking this, and this administration, and I can say it because I'm there. Look, millions of dollars are being spent by this administration. They have some of the best grant writers that I've seen. But when we come and ask this administration for some help on poverty programs and things for the homeless, we are denied. I have came to this mic many times, many years ago, and also found out that there are grants available for the homeless and the poor, but they turn their head the other way. All I'm saying to you once again, and this gentleman, I agree with him, that place that he's talking about is going to be beautiful, but it's not for us. They don't even want us down there. So all I'm saying once again, in order for something to work, you have to unify with people. You have no unity with this community. Only one, two, three, and once again, I can't even say what their names are, or I'll be ejected out of this chamber.
Okay, Mr. Boyd.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Moving on to approval of minutes. Approval of the legislative session minutes of May 12, 2015. Are there any admissions, deletions, corrections, council members? Hearing none, I have a vote. Thank you. Meeting stand, minutes stand as approved. Reports of committee. Report from Chair Williams on the Administration Committee meeting of May 21, 2015. And included in this, in my committee report, I did cover a Resolution 42, 2015 for Mr. Ben Allen. So he was from the Budget and Finance. The Administration Committee had a meeting on May 21, 2015. In attendance was council members Reed, Daniels, Baltimore, and Wilson. The Administration Committee had five pieces of legislation to discuss. Since that date, I've taken two off the agenda. That's Bill 3 and also Resolution 46, but they both were discussed in committee. But we are waiting for some amendments on those two pieces of legislation, so I will not be putting those on the agenda this evening. Bill 5 of 2015. It's an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Harrisburg to technically amend and update Section 5-703.2 of the codified ordinances of the city relating to the imposition and allocation of a parking tax to conform with legislative acts adopted in 2013 by the City Council for the implementations of the Harrisburg Strong Plan. This ordinance is to update the Consensual Recovery Plan and approval of components of the Strong Plan and to comply with the Strong Plan that all financial revenues and funds generated will go into the city's general fund. This is a technical, technical amendment imposed upon each parking transaction at the rate of 20% for each transaction. We will be having a discussion by the Deputy Secretary at future meetings to discuss the regionalization of transportation that is affected by this, this particular bill. Moving on to Resolution 42 of 2015. In attendance from the administration was Earl Newark and Chief Carter. Resolution 42 of 2015 is a resolution approving a Pennsylvania Gaming Control Board Local Law Enforcement Grant Agreement between the Pennsylvania Gaming Control Board, as the grantor, and the City of Harrisburg grantee, and the Humane Society of Harrisburg co-grantee for $160,572.48 of grant funds in the year one and $136,842.18 in year two in order to prevent, investigate, and prosecute unlawful gambling. Now, the purpose of this ordinance is to approve a two-year grant from the Pennsylvania Gaming Control Board to investigate violations of and enforced laws relating to unlawful gambling. With this grant in conjunction with the Humane Society, it is to address the high volume of dog gambling here in the city of Harrisburg. For the first year, the money will be used to hire a animal control officer for the city, to purchase a taser and uniforms for one of the city animal control officers, cameras, laptop computers, training for both officers, billboards, flyers, and educational information for the public about illegal gambling, and other as see fit. Also, we will be hiring a City of Harrisburg risk manager under this grant. The second year, the money will be used for the same categories minus, uh, uniforms and also the humane officer and the Harrisburg risk manager. An independent audit is required after the close of the contract, as well as return of any unused funds with a final report documenting expenditures to the Pennsylvania Gaming Control Board. So I've asked for council's full approval of this. Moving on to Resolution 43. Also in attendance for the administration was Earl Newark and Chief of Police and Bruce Weber. Resolution 43 is a resolution ratifying the submission of a federal equitable sharing agreement and certification to the United States Department of Justice to participate in the federal equitable sharing program. This agreement between the City of Harrisburg and the Department of Justice is a grant sharing forfeited cash, property proceeds, and any other interests when law enforcement officers work jointly on a criminal activity. The proceeds are equally shared and used for law enforcement purposes, such as training, education, uniforms, equipment, law enforcement travel, and several other areas of law enforcement. The Chief of Police decides what funds can be spent on. Currently, there is a balance of $56,806.2 in the fund, and an audit has been done to determine if there were previous funds in the accounts since money has been incoming since 2003. The City of Harrisburg must be a current and compliant equitable sharing program participant, which it is. All funds received are required to be placed in a separate fund from the general fund, and audits are conducted periodically at random. I'm asking for full support on these three pieces of legislation from the council members. And that's the end of my committee report, and I'm moving on to ordinance of first reading. We have none this evening. Ordinance for amendment, we have none. Moving on to ordinance for final passage, Bill 5 of 2015. Mr. Petrowski, please read that into record.
Bill 5 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Koplinsky. It's an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Harrisburg to technically amend and update Section 5-703.2, the codified ordinances of the city relating to the imposition and allocation of a parking tax to conform with legislative acts adopted in 2013 by the City Council for the implementations of the Harrisburg Strong Plan.
Are there any questions or comments on Bill 5, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Koplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Bill 5 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to resolutions. Resolution 42, 2015. Please read that into record. Mr. Petrowski.
Resolution 42 of 2015 was moved by Mr. Allen, seconded by Ms. Reed. It's a resolution approving a Pennsylvania Gaming Control Local Law Enforcement Agreement between Pennsylvania Gaming Control Board, grantor, and the City of Harrisburg grantee as the, and the Humane Society of Harrisburg co-grantee for $160,572.48 of grant funds in year one and $136,842.18 in year two in order to prevent, investigate, and prosecute unlawful gambling.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Koplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 47, 42 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 43, 2015.
Resolution 43 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Koplinsky. It's a resolution ratifying the submission of a federal equitable sharing agreement and certification to the United States Department of Justice to participate in a federal equitable sharing program.
Any questions or comment, Resolution 43? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Koplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yep.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 43 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 49.
Resolution 49 of 2015 was moved by Mr. Allen, seconded by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution approving third proposed 2015 budget allocations.
That will be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. Moving on to Resolution 50.
Resolution 50 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Reed, seconded by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution authorizing the entry into a street lighting upgrade and guaranteed savings contract with the Efficiency Network to upgrade the city's streetlights and other exterior project, uh, exterior lights project and to monitor and guarantee cost savings from the upgrade in accordance with Act 39, noted as the Pennsylvania Guaranteed Energy Savings Act 62PA CAS Sections 3751 through 3757.
That will be placed in Public Works Committee. Moving on to Resolution 51.
Resolution 51 of 2015 was moved by Mr. Baltimore, seconded by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution approving a regional connections funding grant agreement and a related professional service contract with a design professional to be selected by a selection committee appointed by the mayor to perform preliminary engineering for North Sixth Street, North Seventh Street, and Division Street.
That will be placed in Public Safety Committee. Moving on to Resolution 52.
Resolution 52 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Wilson, seconded by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to enter into agreements for the production and development of the Independence Day Festival for 2015.
And that will be placed in Parks and Recreation and Enrichment. Moving on, old business council members, any old business? Hearing none. Moving on to new business council members, any new business?
Just one.
Yeah, Parks and Recs will be holding a meeting tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM, and there's going to be a presentation from TENS, who happens to be the contractor, along with our city engineer, Wayne Martin, to give us a presentation on updating our streetlights in the city of Harrisburg.
What time?
6:00 PM.
Okay. Do you want to announce your other meetings, please?
That's, they're all, oh, also Resolution 41 and, and 52 will also be on that.
Okay.
Take care of them as well. 6:00 PM.
Okay. Mr. Allen? Mr. Allen?
Did you want to announce your June 4 meeting, too?
The June 4?
Yeah, I guess, yeah. Then there's a follow-up meeting on June 4 that's going to deal with any other questions related to the streetlights, if in fact we need the second meeting.
Okay, Mr. Allen.
I just want to announce a Budget and Finance Committee meeting on Wednesday, June 3 at 5:30 here in Council Chambers.
Okay. Ms. Reed?
Uh, we did announce that there will be a Public Works meeting 6:18. There'll probably be one beforehand, before then, but I don't have one scheduled beforehand because our schedule's so full as of right now. But there will be a Public Works meeting on 6:18 to discuss all of the things that we addressed earlier.
You also have one, it's joint with Ms.?
On the 4th.
Right.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yesterday, we celebrated what was originally called Decorations Day. It was a date set aside to honor the, and the Civil War, honor and recognize the Civil War fallen soldiers that gave their lives on both sides of the battle. Since the Civil War, many ceremonies were held on May 30. Around the country, the dates have changed, and was, the date was chosen because it wasn't associated with any war or any particular battle. It was always a date that was set aside to decorate the graves of fallen soldiers. And since that date, it's been moving around, and now it's been set as the last day, last Monday in May. The date may have changed, but the purpose is not. We should never forget the meaning to honor our military that have paid the ultimate sacrifice and laid down their lives for the defense of this country. Each year, you see celebrations, as we saw last weekend, where the people place flags, lay wreaths, have parades, have ceremonies, and a lot of people ask, why do we go through all of this every year? It's just one day a year where we take time out to recognize and walk through the cemeteries and look at the graves and pay honor to those men and women that have given their lives for the defense of our country. Tomorrow, we have Ephraim Slaughter, who was the last Civil War veteran that lived in the city of Harrisburg. Our American Legion was founded and named after him the year after his death, and he will be honored with a life-size statue at the National Civil War Museum. And that ceremony will take place tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM. And following up with that, on the original Memorial Day, which is May 30. A lot of, a lot of people don't realize is that throughout the country, there are some states that don't recognize Memorial Day as the third, the last, last Monday of the, of the month. They still celebrate Memorial Day on May 30, which was the original Memorial Day. On May 30 this year, this happens to be in conclusion with the honor of Ephraim Slaughter at the National Civil War Museum, the only Memorial Day parade held in the city of Harrisburg that has been held for the last eight, this is the 18th year, honoring Ephraim Slaughter and all of those fallen comrades that we have. We have our parade starting at the Camp Curtain School, starting at 12:00 PM, and it marches down to our legion where we have a ceremony. down to our legion where we have a ceremony where we honor our scholarship rep- uh, recipients, and a lot of our veterans, and we provide a picnic lunch. It is the only ceremony in the City of Harrisburg that we have, and it's honored to have it with the family of Ephraim Slaughter, coming from Civil War to current day, and it's going to be held as an honor on Memorial Day. So if you're not doing anything on tomorrow morning, nine A M., National Civil War Museum will be honoring the last living Civil War veteran in the, that lived in the City of Harrisburg. If you follow the American Legion or myself on Facebook, we were out, we put, of course, put flags at all of the cemeteries. We did three cemeteries this year. We do three cemeteries every year. And we took pictures by his grave. Um, he's actually also buried at Lincoln Cemetery, where William Howard Day is buried. William Howard Day is a very significant person. A lot of people know the cemetery, but they don't know anything about the man. He was educator, he was educated early on. He was born nineteen, eighteen twenty-five and died in nineteen hundred. William Howard Day was, was the predecessor to all of the other civil rights activists that we had in this country, and a lot of people know the cemetery, but they don't know anything about the man. So on Saturday, also, we'll be laying a wreath at Lincoln Cemetery, which was a predominantly African-American cemetery, because we couldn't be buried anyplace else. And that will be held at nine A M. on the thirtieth, and then the parade will follow afterwards. But the benefit of being at the cemetery at nine A M. on Saturday at Lincoln Cemetery, which is in Pembroke, is that you may also get an opportunity to take a look at William Howard Day's cemetery. And all those that have a smartphone, I would highly encourage you to look up these individuals that paved the way for so many of us. William Howard Day was not a military person, but he did so much to pave the way for us, and he was the predecessor to civil rights. And Ephraim Slaughter, who was born a slave, and still turned around to fight for the rights of this country, and still post-slavery, was, they had to go through Reconstruction, and all of the things that he had to go through, and died in nineteen forty-three. And our post was named after him, and the significance of that is that our post was formed nineteen forty-four, before the desegregation of the military. So there's a lot of history. So if you're looking at, if you missed all of the ceremonies last weekend because you were having a barbecue, or going to downtown, or doing some other things, this is another opportunity for you to really remember what Memorial Day is about.
Thank you. Yeah, rock and miss Reed. Ms. Daniels?
Um, yes, there's a building and housing meeting, June tenth, at five thirty.
Okay. And also, uh, we're gonna have a change in our legislative session schedule. These are remaining legislative session dates, June ninth, June thirtieth, and July seventh. Council will be going on a hiatus from July seventh to August the twenty-fifth. Any other new business, council members? Hearing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Meetings adjourned.